Calling to order, the planning zoning work session for March 12th, 2025. At 6:30, can I have a roll call?
Mr., this is an old one, Ms. Frazier? Mr. Dagan?
Present.
Ms. Tracy?
Present.
Sorry. Mr. Cleary?
Present.
Mr. Mangini?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Sen. Present.
Mr. Court?
Here.
Mr. Neff. Sorry. You have a quorum.
Brown, one question for you. Do we need to make a motion to excuse? Or is this just only because it's a work session that we don't need to make that motion?
During work sessions, you do not, you can't make a motion.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving into citizens comments. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And is it written down here? Okay, it says written down, actually. And local phone number is 907-486-3231. Or a toll-free number of 1-855-492-9202.
There are no comments waiting in the queue.
Okay. Seeing no comments, we'll move on.
So we're having some technical difficulties, I believe, with these screens this evening. So we're going to postpone both training sessions until IT is able to fix that for us.
Okay, both training sessions postponed. Move on to packet review. First ordinance up for discussion is ordinance FY2025-NN. Code changed to assisted living. Oh, good, we got the...
Thank you. I'll just go through that. I know the commission has reviewed this at work session several times already. This last iteration of the ordinance has been reviewed by the borough attorney. He and I have talked about it and have made some revisions to it, primarily on the definition of assisted living facility and home, wanting to quote the Alaska statutes regarding assisted living homes and facilities. And that's basically the major change that's from what you've seen before, is just adding that reference into the definition. For those who are newer commissioners on the commission, this use question has come to staff several times over the last several months about where assisted living uses are allowed, those residences, either homes or facilities, depending on the scale of the facility. Our zoning code, as it is written today, does not have a provision for assisted living. And so this amendment would define assisted living home and assisted living facility, that difference being the number of people being housed, and also would provide locations both as a use of right permitted in the zoning districts and also where it could be approved as a conditional use permit. If you have any questions on this, please let me know. But in terms of the last draft, that was before you, the only major change is just adding the Alaska statute to the proposed definition.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Did we ever figure out how many we have?
Yeah, the state...
How many assisted living facilities do we have in Kodiak?
So the state did not provide information to us or would not provide information to us on the number, and we had not gone through a public records request, which we could have done, but they did not provide information to us about how many licensed facilities are currently in the city or in the borough.
Okay. So the ones that we know about, are they all in zoning districts that we've proposed they be allowed as a permitted use?
It's hard for me to... I mean, yes, they're in zoning districts that we've talked about in terms of whether they would be permitted or not. It would get down to how many people are being housed in there. And so we may not have that, I don't have that information for us. But they would be allowed either through conditional use permit or as a permitted use, just depending on the number of people.
Perfect. Thanks.
So what we're looking for today, I know this is a little out of order, I think, from the, some of the amendments we're talking about, because we had the pet-related uses, I think we had talked about that one first. I just want to inform the commission that for your April meeting, you do have three cases before you. We have two rezones and a subdivision filed by the city of Old Harbor, and we'll be reviewing those at the April meeting. Staff's suggestion would be that the pet-related use ordinance, since we had an individual come to us asking to make that amendment, that that would go in May, and then the assisted living, one was just one that was brought by staff to talk about, move it to the June meeting. And so I think what I would be looking for, or what staff would be looking for from the commission, is just whether you all agree with having this go in June for a public hearing.
I would agree, but I would be happy to entertain some discussion about it from everybody else.
So on these, it says five, whether it's the assisted living facility versus the home. Facility would be like a day, daytime use versus the home would be overnight.
So assisted living home would be, yeah, it's overnight use, and so is the facility. They're both overnight uses. It's just the scale of how many people, and that's consistent with what the state has in their license program.
So is that very off of size, a square footage of a home? Or can you have five patients in a 1,200 square foot Aleutian home versus a Spruce Cape 3,500 square foot?
So in terms of zoning, we don't get into, you know, in terms of looking at the square footage of the building, that's something that's typically involved when we're talking about certificate of occupancies and building code and that, in the review of those, as well as, as part of the state license, they also look at how much space is available in the interior. Primarily, we're talking about is just what, you know, from a land use standpoint, where would it be? And then how are we defining that?
Madam Chair, regarding the streamlining of tasks that are upcoming, I would say to follow the lead of our staff. If you feel, Chris, that it's better to straighten things out a little bit, that'd be good by me.
I'm thinking about it from the assembly standpoint. They were going to have at least two items from the April meeting go to the assembly for review, since we have rezones. And then both these code amendments, of course, would have to go to the assembly. So I'm trying to space it out for them, so they're not getting too much of a crunch of commission items for them.
I'm glad that you're looking out for the best interests of the commission to help the assembly move forward on the things that need to be moved forward. Thank you.
I'm sure NOVA appreciates it, too. Any other discussion on the ordinance itself or the timeline?
I'm fine with the timeline on this, but back to the boarding kennels.
Which we'll talk about in the next, that's the next one coming up.
I'll wait.
Thanks, Tracy.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll have this on for June.
Good on this one. Okay. So let's see, so we're in packet review. Does that mean that I missed the items for discussion, the videos, or did we skip those?
Technical issues prevented us from using those, so we'll have to postpone until IT fixes our video issue.
Totally understand. I just didn't want to miss them. I apologize to the group for being late. I had some parent-teacher conferences run late today. It's, this Wednesday of the month always seems to be a busy one. Okay, so our next item then, under items for discussion, item, nope, packet review, is the pet-related uses, which does not have an ordinance number yet, but we have definitely seen this ordinance and discussed it already. Did you have a staff report that you wanted to share, Chris?
So there's been some changes based on, because this has been reviewed by the attorney as well as the borough clerk, too, so we've had some changes to this. Not necessarily with the definitions, although those are similar to what we talked about last time. I don't think those really have changed. Where we have some changes, and not really anything's changed in what zoning districts we're talking about for these facilities or these uses, excuse me. And it's really into our, getting close to the last page, page, I guess page five of six and page six of six is where we get some changes from what we've talked about before. And that gets into 17260, which is dealing with conditional uses and the conditions of that, of those conditional uses. Based on, I think, our last discussion with the commission, there was a question about, you know, Kubi has some standard, some standards specific to these pet-related uses, particularly the boarding kennel or the boarding services. And so that's what we have in here. We've made some changes to this, working with the attorney. Basically, in paragraph C, those have been tweaked slightly in terms of facilities being enclosed. It does provide some flexibility there for the commission to allow some uses to be outside that aren't fully enclosed, but it requires the commission's active review of that. In other words, it gives you more flexibility, but also gives the applicant, requires them to do more in terms of justifying why they need to have something outside that's not in a fully enclosed structure, if it's outdoor runs or whatever it might be. So it requires more input from them. And then also, the fencing is pretty much the same. We talk about noise, basically, in terms of the design of the structure. That's been a consistent item that we found throughout all boarding kennel ordinances from other communities. And then we also look at the issue of adequate provisions, prevent surface water quality impacts due to any animal waste. And that will be case by case, depending on proximity to streams or whatever it might be in terms of a property could be. Yes?
So in Lake County, Pennsylvania, the Amish population does some 17th century farming techniques that take the manure of the stable or of the dairy and put it directly onto the fields. Subsequently, the nitrate runoff into the streams has poisoned the Chesapeake Bay. And one of the ways that the states surrounding Pennsylvania have begun to mitigate this is to force the state of Pennsylvania to put in or have on their properties retention ponds for the waste to settle out, to help with water cleaning. Is that something that we, as a commission, would consider as a requirement if we're dealing with a water runoff issue?
I mean, I wouldn't say we would go to that level right away. I think it all depends on the size of the facility if we're talking about. There's not a lot of dogs, and if they have a plan for how they clean up pet, you know, dog waste or whatever it might be, you may not need to go anywhere near that far with any procedures. This provides really, our standards here basically requires the applicant to explain to the commission how they plan to handle pet waste. We also talk about how many animals they're going to have on the facility. That's just part of the review process.
Understood. Given that we do have a sensitive population with our salmon spawning regions throughout the borough, that may be a consideration we want to consider, so we can keep the longevity of our fishing population in stock.
Yeah, again, it'll get down to, you know, what the proximity is, if it has a close proximity to a salmon stream or something, it may be something that we have to look at more closely. If it's not, then it may not be as big of issue, especially if we don't have a lot of animals being boarded at one time. That could all resolve the issue as well. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Chris? So paragraph C that you were just referring to, that starts on line 234, that section has pet boarding facilities there as number one. Would you mind maybe sharing some insight as to why animal shelters wouldn't also have these same stipulations that are under A through E?
So, you know, so animal shelters really weren't looked at as being a conditional use permit because of where they would be allowed, basically in the industrial zone. Also, it was anticipated when we, when I talked to the attorney, you don't have a lot of homeless, you know, pet shelters in your community. Usually, you just have one. And so with that facility, it's not necessarily as big a deal as when we have some, for example, boarding kennels that could be in residential properties and things like that. So that's why it was discussed not to have it in that particular, the same kind of thing as the boarding kennels.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks. That makes total sense. Our existing animal shelter is zoned business.
Light industrial.
Correct. Oh, it's light industrial?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I learned something new today. Appreciate it. Does anybody else have questions about this ordinance?
Okay, so I understood you, that's what I saw in the writing, too, is that there's no longer outdoor pet kennels used allowed without a conditional use?
Well, it doesn't mean that you can't do outdoor. What the conditional use permit states is, is that it needs to be indoors, but the commission has the ability, as part of its review of a conditional use permit, since it's discretionary review, you have the ability as the commission to, if someone comes to you and says, I want to have this aspect of the use outside, and here's my restrictions, you have the ability to approve that and put a condition in to deal with those restrictions.
Okay. Yeah, I see. Yeah, I noticed there was a lot of stipulations, like the height of the fence and soundproofing and stuff, and I doubt any of the existing places measure up to any of those standards. And so what are we going to do with the existing, where were they going to be grandfathered in, the existing kennels?
Well, I mean, we're not going after the existing kennels that are there. I mean, I think what we would do is if someone were to come in for a permit to expand an existing facility, you know, we'll have to, they'll have to go get the conditional use permit, because where those are all located, they would need a conditional use permit to expand or change the operation.
To change the operation, okay.
And it doesn't mean that maybe in the future, if someone comes in and wants to buy that facility, their bank doesn't make them come through and get the conditional use permit. I mean, there's possibilities for that, too. But typically, I mean, we're typically not going after anybody. We're complaint-driven. We don't go after people just because we know that use is not allowed in the zone unless we get a complaint on it. And if we do get a complaint on it, I mean, we could require that they go through the conditional use permit process based on that.
Have we ever had any complaints about our local kennels?
I haven't received any, since I've been here, I have not received any official complaints from people on it.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say, in terms of the standards here, as Commissioner Neff brought up, the reason why it's worded now the way it is is because the borough attorney and I went back and forth on, like, there's a whole lot of scenarios, there's a whole lot of examples of different types of kennels, different sizes and different locations. And the idea was, let's give it our ideal, which is everything should be inside. And if someone wants to do something different than that, then they just have to justify that and go through the conditional use, or go through the conditional use permit process anyway, they can justify it, and then the commission can provide some flexibility to them and put conditions in place. You know, for example, they want to do outdoor runs, and the commission can say, hey, your outdoor run is based on what your conditional use permit plan is, here's the hours of operations that you can do that, and we can put those all in conditions of approval and do that. And so that's why it works out better, I think, this way, where our flexibility is more what the commission's going to allow people to do, more than just trying to hit them with the hardest requirement right away, like a 50-foot setback or something like that. It just depends on what the site is and how many animals we're talking about, and what's, you know, your outdoor area, what's it next to? Maybe it's not next to any, you know, residential uses. So it just depends.
Do you have a question, Tracy?
I do. So we still have a lady who's, is she waiting on us to go ahead with her conditional permit for near-island?
Yeah, so in her location, it's not near any residential, so, I mean, it's in a business zone, that property she mentioned. It still would need the conditional use permit, so we still got to kind of figure out exactly, you know, what they're proposing to do there. But it wouldn't have a residential component next door where we'd have to worry about noise and things like that. But, yes, she is waiting on the commission to make changes to the code to allow a boarding facility in a business zone. Currently, as we mentioned, there's only two zones that allow boarding facilities, and we have hardly any properties zoned in those zoning districts. So we're going to try to resolve some of these issues with this amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. So we will be seeing this on the...
This is in May.
Okay.
May meeting, yeah.
So May for this one, June for our previous ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Okay, so we don't have any old business or new business next week. Did I see that our meeting next week is canceled, right? That's on the website already?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. So we won't have our regular meeting next week, because we don't have any cases. So we'll see each other again at the work session in April, which is on the 9th, at 6:30 PM here in Assembly Chambers. And we will have our regular meeting in April on the 16th with a couple cases in front of us at 6:30 PM, also here in Assembly Chambers. So that takes us to citizens comments again. Citizens comments are going to be limited to three minutes per speaker. If you're coming up to speak, please make sure that you're addressing the body as a whole and not individual commissioners. Our local number is 907-486-3231. And our toll-free number is 855-492-9202. Okay, we don't have anybody in the room with us who wishes to speak, and we don't have anybody on the phone, so I will go ahead and close citizens comments and move on to staff comments. Chris?
Okay. So a couple, you know, two things really for this evening. One is, I wanted to let the commission know that the hazard mitigation plan update has, was approved by the assembly on March 6th. That has been sent to the cities within the borough for their adoption, and we also today sent it to the state of Alaska, the Alaska Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for their review. Once they're done, they will send it to FEMA for their final review and approval. Once that's approved, since the commission, since the assembly already approved the resolution, once FEMA has approved it, then it's approved for the borough. And the borough could look at grants for hazard mitigation projects and things like that. The other cities within the borough will have to have their resolutions adopted before they can use the plan to justify any grant proposals that they may have. Any questions on that? Yes?
What does hazard mitigation entail exactly?
So a good example, we have a very, we have actually a grant proposal that we got approved last year for, to do, I'm sure those of you who have been in Kodiak for a while understand that out in the flats, we do have some flooding with regard to Russian River and Sergeant Creek. So we did receive a grant from the state as well as from FEMA for hazard mitigation grant to do a hydrology and hydraulic study of both streams. That project is currently underway. It's about 70% complete, so we expect it to be complete sometime in late summer, early fall of this year. And that will be used to inform a Pell study that the Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities is currently, I think they just closed their RFP last week or so, or two weeks ago, maybe, on that project. So the hydrology study will help inform that project, which will be looking at replacing the bridges on both streams as part of those projects that will be potentially doing some hard infrastructure mitigation of some of the streams. And of course, I believe the Corps of Engineers is also looking at the streams as well because of some houses that are in peril of being flooded or have been flooded in the past. So there's a lot of different things happening. So, but that's an example of a hazard mitigation project is doing a study like that. But they can also be hard infrastructure projects, they could also be projects that are public education oriented, those kind of things. And so, yeah, there's a broad scope to it. I mean, basically, what a hazard mitigation project is, is anything that reduces risk to loss of life or property damage. And that's a wide range of things that could be a project that could help with those.
Thank you.
Have we ever considered doing debris flow basins as a mitigation project?
We haven't specifically. I'm not sure, you're talking about for the streams out in the flats?
Not just for the streams in the flats, but I'm speaking more specifically for the mudslide potentials that are here in the city and in the Service District 1 area.
Yeah, I know the city had their landslide study completed recently. I know they're looking at some things to do. They may very well have a mitigation project, hope to maybe ask for some funds for. I know, so I know they're very interested in getting the hazard mitigation plan adopted, so I expect that they'll probably be the next entity to adopt. That would be them, because I know they're probably thinking about some infrastructure for dealing with the landslides, at least in the city. I don't, I couldn't speak for what could happen in Service Area 1 area. That, I mean, that would be, certainly could be a project. We do have the emergency management coordinator, that's a shared position, it's actually with the city, but it's funded shared by the city and the borough. So that could be a project that they look at. So I know there are projects on landslides that are listed in the hazard mitigation plan, and hopefully they'll be able to be looked at and maybe get some grant proposals submitted.
Thank you.
All right. Well, the other thing that I have, you should have a handout before you. Now that the hazard mitigation plan is completed, we'll be getting back to work on the new comprehensive plan, Plan 2045. You know, we had some visioning process at the end of 2024. As part of that, staff worked to create a draft vision statement for the comprehensive plan. That draft is before you in this handout. What I would like the commission to do, because we will be sending this to the assembly for comments at their April 10th work session, I would like the commission to please kind of review the vision statement, and if you would, you can email me or Bronwyn any comments that you may have, any suggested changes to the vision statement. We'd appreciate your feedback on this. Again, we're going to be taking it to the assembly in April for their kind of review and hopefully kind of sign off. And then after that, we'll be going forward for, I think our next group of things for the comp plan is some workshops regarding land use and housing. We expect those probably to take place sometime in April. So it's, we're starting to kind of ramp back up to working on that project, and hopefully we'll get it done by the end of the year. If you have any questions on that, again, feel free to look this over. I know I'm dropping it on you here right at the meeting, so please look it over and give me, email me any comments that you may have, or email Bronwyn, either one of us, and we'll be happy to take a look at those. Thank you.
This is exciting. Bronwyn, did you have any staff comments for the evening?
No, Ms. Chair, but I do appreciate you asking.
All right. So that concludes staff comments. Let's go to commissioner comments. Athena, I'm going to make you go again first, but only because you're on the end. We'll go and order it.
Switching seats next.
I just want to say, the staff did a very good job with those two ordinances interpreting our discussions in the past. I felt like you really did a good job, Chris and Bronwyn and everybody involved there. So thank you.
Again, I'd like to echo all the sentiment here. Thank you, Bronwyn, thank you, Chris, for your hard work and service to our commission as well as our community. Regarding the future work that we have ahead of us, I look forward to it, and thank you again for your leadership.
Like to welcome the new Commissioner Mangini, since it's his first meeting. Welcome and look forward to more fun.
Thanks, nice meeting you all. As a note, I'm not going to be here for the work session April 9th. I will work hard to look into the meeting schedule in the future and to not miss future meetings, but I had business plans through June, so I can't really change much of that before now. So I'll work hard to get it. much of that before now. So, I'll work hard to get up to speed and be of some impact. So, thank you.
This is exciting. Today's just exciting. Every chair is full. And for those of you that don't know, our current comprehensive plan was approved in 2008, and I think for those of you that have been here for a while, you are well aware that lots of things in this community have changed since 2008. So it's going to be really, really exciting to have a new plan that reflects the values of our community, the current circumstances of our community, and to have it done by the end of the year is even more exciting. So I-
I'm not promising it, I'm saying I'm hoping for that.
I'm just pumped. Thank you, guys, everybody for being here, thank you for the commitment, and for questions. Makes for good discussion, which makes for good code. So, if you have questions about any of these ordinances, please do always feel free to speak up and ask. And also, Chris, thanks for your work on these ordinances. There's a lot of this stuff in the code that's just kind of been left on the back burner for a long time, and it needs to be, needs to be updated, for sure. So, thank you. That's all I've got, so I'll go ahead and say that we are adjourned at 7:03. Thank you.